We're moving to the next one. And just calculations of student yields from new construction of single-family division and multifamily development. And Mr. Rogers or Dr. Martin, you want to go first?
Let me go first. Thank you for the discussion about public bus transportation for students. I'm going to proceed accordingly with planning for both of those. I'm looking into that. So thank you for your support there. Mr. Washington, are you on?
I am, sir.
Go ahead and introduce the next topic, please.
Good morning, everyone. Scott Washington, Chief Laboring Officer here. The next two topics will involve our office school planning under our umbrella of capital planning and construction with the calculation of student yields from new construction of our multifamily developments and also of our feasibility study I had with me this morning, Mr. Dan Lubley and Mr. Tim Rogers from our office of school planning. We're here to help and assist with the discussion at that point. I know county council members, I sent a copy or a copy of a recent board memo was sent to you in regards to this discussion, kind of aiding this discussion. And we'll be able to go through that memo and answer any questions you may have at this time.
Okay, so Mr. Rogers or Ms. Lubley? Who wants to do a quick introduction about your memo and then we'll ask a question?
I think we'll start with Mr. Lubley and Mr. Rogers can jump in.
Thank you, Dr. Wu. Thank you, Mr. Washington. Good morning, board members, county council members. As Mr. Washington noted, I'm Dan Lubley, Director of Capital Planning and Construction. And with me on this topic is Mr. Tim Rogers, Manager of School Planning. In recent years, there have been ongoing discussions regarding the impact of new residential development on public school enrollment. The perception or misconception is that new development only has a one-year impact when the housing unit is permitted. The impact, however, is a continuous impact beyond this first year. When a housing unit is permitted, it provides the potential impact of a new family moving into development and may provide school-age students. After the first year, the housing unit, which are new, then becomes part of the ever-growing existing housing market within the county. These housing units then continue to provide an impact through multiple factors, including new births in students that grow into school age, as well as immediate and future resale and turnover. While this is taken into account with the multiple developments are reviewed, this is at the heart of the misconception of the single-year impact. As noted, Mr. Rogers and I are here to assist with the board and county councils' discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Lubley. And Ms. Cottoneo?
Actually, Mr. Lubley kind of said what I was going to say to kind of introduce the topic. I think that a school system data point, which is a point in time one year, has been taken or misconstrued into other agencies as the overall impact of new construction and doesn't take into an account the cumulative effect. And I think because of all the new construction, it's sort of why we are where we are in certain parts of the county is that we have not, we've only counted one year as the impact of that new construction when in fact, and it could be several hundred students difference depending on the type of development. So it really does make a very big difference in how the impact of new construction is characterized. I'll let other people ask questions because I've sort of been obsessed with this and I don't need to have anything answered.
Okay, Mr. Youngman?
Yeah, I mean, every new housing unit, it creates a permanent school need. Not maybe for every year that that house is in existence, but you know, new construction, especially new construction, single-family detached, tends to attract folks that already have kids. A lot of times they're still preschool kids. So you might not have that immediate pop. But taking myself, for example, I've been here 20 years. First few years, no kids. For about 10 or 12 years, had two kids in the system. Now have none again. When I sell, that then becomes a resale. Same thing's going to start. Why, why can't we step away from these individual little unit? Oh, it's new construction today, but it's not new construction next year? And just say for the total count of housing units we have in Howard County, here is our number. We know from 100,000 housing units, we are going to have 60,000 students. You know, start that real high and work our way down and, you know, look at these new housing developments and, you know, it's hard because we kind of have the, okay, we're going to get 1.2 kids from this type of house or 1.8 this type of house. But also look at it from a timeline standpoint. In a townhome, they might come later because you, you may have folks moving into those that don't have kids yet, but they might stay there for a while. Dan, how did, or Scott, how do other counties do this? How are the consultants telling us to do it? So that we're really looking at sort of the average life cycle of that, that call it single-family detached or townhouse or apartment? So that it's, you know, we're predicting the future of that whole neighborhood?
Mr. Rogers, you may be best to jump in and answer that one, sir.
Thanks, Scott. Tim Rogers, Office of School Planning Manager. Good morning, everyone. So there's a couple, a couple of points to answer Mr. Youngman's question. I think the data we provided in the past has mostly come from our projection system. And that may necessarily, may not necessarily be the best data points to reflect the impact of growth from, enrollment growth from new construction when, when reporting this data to stakeholders and the public. I want to make it clear that our enrollment projection methodology does include those impacts going forward. So we calculate the impact of those new units. We also then add those units to calculations for resales, pre-K move-ins, apartment turnover and other aspects. So it's all in our projection. But in terms of reporting, I think the suggestions from Mr. Youngman are online with some things that we may need to think about doing in the future in terms of presenting the entire picture of student enrollment. I think you mentioned standing yield for the whole county or different unit types. That may be an avenue we can explore. But I think we're going down the right road there in terms of, instead of just using the data that we're using to project enrollment, communicating using data that all stakeholders can understand and be on the same page with the full impact of development.
Tim, thank you for that. I, you know, and I do, I do think there's this weird misconception that, you know, you guys count the number of kids that are going to come from the first year of a, of a townhouse. And then for some reason, you don't assume they're going to be there the following year or the following year. Like, that's not happening. Anybody that thinks that's happening is kind of bizarre. I think this is more of a, of this classic back and forth between what ties back to new development and what ties back to resale? When does, when does a housing unit or a community that's, that's considered new construction become being considered a resale? And I think it's, it's really hard to make that delineation because somebody might sell their new construction home after one year. Is that a resale or is that really? You know, either way, every time we add a housing unit to the county, it's going to create a permanent, you know, capacity need for the schools, whether it's that first year that it's considered new construction or in two years when it's a resale. I think people are getting caught up in that because it's, it's that us versus them. How much is resale? How much should the developers be paying? And we're getting down that rabbit hole instead of just acknowledging that our total number of houses, regardless of how they got here, are going to generate X number of students. So. Thank you for your, your answer there, Tim. Thanks.
Okay, Ms. Young?
So I had a couple of questions about, actually, and I'm not sure if this gets somewhat into the feasibility study, but obviously it's all related, student yield, et cetera. But if you want me to wait, I can.
Can you ask a question? Then we'll see whether it will be moved to the next one?
I was curious about the capacity chart, which I'm just trying to relocate because, there it is, local capacity and state board capacities for school year 2020-21, which is on page 15 of the feasibility study.
So can we move that to the next session?
Okay, yes, that's, yeah, I'm happy to do that. And then I, I wanted to, since it was mentioned in the report, I wanted to congratulate the school district and Mr. Lubley and Mr. Rogers and the people who came before them. Renee came in wherever you are. That you all have done such an incredible job with the accuracy of your predictions. That was pointed out in the first two or three pages of this feasibility study. And I know that you all won't be tooting your own horns, so I just wanted to toot that horn for you.
We greatly appreciate receiving that feedback from elected officials. Thank you very much, Ms. Young.
Do you have other questions, Ms. Young?
My other questions really go further into the feasibility study.
Okay, okay. Ms. Wash?
Thank you, Dr. Wu. I had, I guess, one, one comment and one question. And the comment is, you know, we're talking about this theoretically, but the fact of the matter is that the council, this council, the five of us, use this apparent misnomer, the 60-40 resales versus new development, to calculate what the adjusted school impact should be. So if that is not, if that is not the appropriate ratio, then, then that means that the calculations that we base that incremental step by is also perhaps flawed or for sure flawed. My question though is additional to this notion of the point in time thing, there have been a couple of projects that have come before the council that have illustrated, I don't want to use the haphazard as the word, but to be, to not be so definitive in terms of what we are calculating for student yield. And, and that would be comparisons between the Robinson Overlook, where we approved a pilot, and Dorsey Overlook. This has come before us in several different iterations. If you use Dorsey Overlook actual projections, you get student yields that are twice what, what the school system is projecting for the same type of development at Dorsey Overlook. And if I'm reading the information that we got right from the school system, depending on what schools those kids are districted to, the yield changes. So if they're going to Running Brook and Northfield, they have the same yield. But if they're going to Dunloggin, we say there's going to be way more kids coming out of the same apartment going to Dunloggin than they would if they were going to Wild Lake Middle. And there's, and then it's the same at the high school level. But it causes me concern when I see the same apartment in the same location sending kids to one or the other school, depending on where a redistricting analysis is, and the student yield changing by virtue of where that receiving school is. Is that, how does that fit in? And is that, did I find the one bust in all of the, the school projections or why would that happen?
Thanks, Ms. Wash. Yeah, sure. So when we're building an enrollment projection, we're looking at the historic student yield rates from each of those factors by school. Because, and, and the reason it's by school is certain geographies have certain characteristics in terms of the types of units that are there, the value of those units and their historical student, your yield rates, their typical student yields from those units. So in order to respond to those localized trends, we're calculating these factors at the school district level, at the, the school boundary level. We can report impacts to, to student enrollment from development in, in different ways, in, in any way that makes sense and that, that responds to the, the needs for this data of the various stakeholders. So if, if we need to change, if we need to reformat reporting, if we need to include more detailed data in future feasibility studies, those are all items that we can look at going forward.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rogers. It was just, you know, in the midst of a redistricting exercise, again, looking at the same corner at 108 in Columbia Road. And, and depending on whether they go to one or the other middle school, the, the projected student yield according to the Howard County Public School System is double at Dunloggin, meaning we're underestimating perhaps by half as many kids who would end up in Wild Lake instead.
Okay, Ms. Wash and Dr. Lu?
Thank you. I want to provide some comments. The first one is regarding resale versus new construction. So if we assume the same number of project students for those two construction or resale, actually the impact on the school system are different. Because for resale, they scattered across the county. But for new construction, if we look at one community, it's highly likely that they will go to the same elementary school, the same middle school and same high school. So for the same number of project students, their impact is very different. Take my community as an example. As a new community, we have 88 houses. So the first day of school, when we watched students get on the bus, the bus was really crowded. We follow the bus to school, we see some students, they have to stand on the bus. So the same day, they have to send back two buses. And the next year, so some of the preschoolers will go to elementary school and then the same bus stop, there were 40 students. So the same day, they had to split the school bus into like two bus stops to accommodate this. That is the impact of new construction on one school. So their impact's very different from resale, which scattered across the county. My second point is, it's very likely that there is an estimate of the contribution of the new constructions. Because when we look at the data historically, new construction add new students. That was not there before. And for resales, it's very likely that the previous family, they had students in the school system. And when they grow older, they exit the school system and then resale. So if you look at the time, the data point longitudinally, the new construction is addition, the pure addition. And the resale for some different time period, you may see a decrease. However, look at the long-term impact. Like one century, you will see that it's very like during time period, they contribute a very similar number of students across the long-term impact. So that's my comments from a perspective of a statistician while looking at the data. Thank you.
Ms. Rogers or Mr. Lubley, do you have any comments on that?
Tim Rogers, Office of School Planning. I would just, thank you for those comments, Dr. Lu. They definitely show that you're, you're digging into our data and paying attention and, and thinking about ways to, to work with our processes. I would, I would just say that, you know, every year, we, we bring in new student data, new data from DPZ on sales and permits. And we recalculate the student yield rates to add a new year to that historical data for all of the data points. So if we start to notice that in a particular school boundary, resales are yielding higher, we may adjust projections accordingly. So that data is updated every year. It's a, it's a new look at the historical data that informs the future projections every year. So I, I think we have processes in place to adjust recent, for recent changes or new trends in all of those factors, new construction yields and resale yields. But I would welcome the opportunity to look at it with, look at it with you further.
Okay, thank you. I really appreciate that. So it will be very helpful that we can look at each polygon individually because it has impact on school redistricting and on the utilization of the schools because of the new constructions for particular community. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, since we have so many people try to speak, want to speak. So I will put off Ms. Cottoneo, Ms. Young for the moment. I will go to people who haven't speak yet and you have time or come back to you. Ms. Thomas Moore?
I want to thank Councilwoman Walsh for bringing up this point and also for Mr. Rogers and Mr. Lubley, who are willing to have this discussion now. Because we've, I don't think we understand how much, how much progress we've actually made by actually discussing this, that this truly is a problem. Because we clearly are at a point in time, and Dr. Lu mentioned this, that we have the data by how many students and what address they come from. And this pushing down from the attendance area down into the polygon has not yielded us, I believe, as good of the numbers as we can. We, if we know how a polygon is behaving, then we should be able to take that data. And that data should not change based on which school that polygon is assigned to. It just doesn't make sense. And I don't think it has helped us in the past. So I'm looking forward to both our organization and your group and us together having these discussions with the Office of School Planning to try to figure out how we can better do this. Because as more development keeps coming, capacity does not increase. We are continuing to live the same nightmare. And which is why I am also glad that during the feasibility study with the Board of Ed last week, we were talking about development polygons, which I have been talking about for years and years and years as a way for the school system to have another tool in order to mitigate the capacity issues that we're seeing within the school system.
Okay, I'm next. So I have two questions. I think the first question, try to address what Ms. Wash proposed. Because 60-40% between resale and, or other number, and new construction, which is will help us to really address the funding issue. From our school side, how can we help the county council make sure that a prediction is more accurate and to reflect the reality on the ground? So either Ms. Roger or Ms. Lubley, can you answer that question?
Sure, Dr. Wu. I mean, I think that in terms of our enrollment projection, I think that we are accurately projecting the number of students from new construction and from resales. I think that the confusion comes in where we're using the way we think of new construction and resale student yields to communicate, to answer other questions where there's better reporting methods and, and maybe the data needs to be presented in a different way to answer those questions. So I, I look forward to future, to continuing this conversation on the ways to report and communicate the impact to school enrollment of new construction and resales with, with you all. It's something we're going to have to continue to work on and, and fine tune as we go forward.
I see. So I think it's important that in the future, can we report two scenarios? One is what we have now, we know like by individual level is accurate. But at the same time, we report a comparative, like a table show what the real impact or full impact of the development. Can we do that in, like give the council members a full picture of what's happening on ground?
Yeah, I think, I think reporting where we're taking a look at major developments, major residential developments and looking at the expected student yield from that development over multiple years, I think it's a reasonable discussion and reasonable way to think about this.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to that. So second question, I think it's kind of interesting. When we talk about a student yield changes because of different middle school and I think what's happening for the same development? Because we know from historic data, that's what is happening. So from your understanding, what's happening there?
I, I'm trying to understand the question.
So the question is like, because I think, I forget who wrote that. I think Ms. Wash, Ms. Wash like raised that question, right? For the same development and you have different student yield, if they go to Dunloggin Middle School or go to Wild Lake Middle School. So what's, because you said you build that because of historic data? Or, so what's happening there, like from your understanding? If I'm just an ordinary parent, why you have different yield there? I tried to explain that.
Mr. Rogers, if I could clarify, I think the crux of where this is going is what you were talking about, how the yield or how the, the students are projected at the school level and then aggregated down to the polygon level. So as you're taking a look at the individual schools, each of those schools have a historical data for each of the different factors. So that's, that's the first step that's creating, say, one middle school has a certain factor based off of historical data versus a separate school has a separate, or potentially a separate yield factor for each of the different factors. And then when you aggregate them down to an individual polygon, that's potentially why you're seeing a, a different yield. Would that be correct, Mr. Rogers?
I, I think everything you said is correct. We do, again, gather data to create the historical yield rates and then use the historical yield rates to project enrollment again at the school level each year. And, and again, each school does have different historical yield rates for different types of development. So, you know, a 100-unit apartment building may yield students at a different rate at Running Brook than it does at Forest Ridge or Laurel Woods or somewhere else. And that's again, based on historical data. So that's what we have to go on in terms of projecting what the student yields are going to be from future development. And we regionalize it because, by, by school boundary because that's the, kind of the sweet spot between a big enough sample size and a geography that has definable characteristics and includes neighborhoods that may be different from neighborhoods in other parts of the county.
I think, thank you. Okay, Ms. Mosley? I, I think I can see.
She has a question in the chat staff. I'd like for you to acknowledge that.
Okay, maybe just have a written response. And Ms. Youngman, Mr. Youngman?
I forgot to lower my hand.
Okay.
We're a little more old school with the council, so.
I will come back to Ms. Cottoneo.
Are you coming back to me or am I going?
Yeah, I'm coming back to you. You have second round. Just, we have a little more time.
Oh, okay. So I can go now?
Yeah.
Okay. So my concern is, is as we move forward, we've, there's nothing we can do about the past. We can learn from it. And we are moving into Hoco by Design and the next general plan. And there's lots of talk about school, school infrastructure. I don't want this misnomer that has impacted how we have planned capacity to continue on. How do we make sure that this reality, the reality of what new construction does? Because we are, there's discussions about removing ApFO. There's discussions about opening it wide, wide open. And how do we make sure that this, the, the correct narrative, the correct reality is part of these conversations? I'm only one person in Hoco by Design and kind of part of a minority, to be quite, to be quite honest, in, in the concerns that are voiced. How can we make sure that we put all of these words that we're, we're speaking now into action and into ways to mitigate the impact of new construction? And not to be against new construction, but to ensure that we have the infrastructure in place to support it. I'm just afraid that we're just going to keep talking and talking and nothing's going to get done. And Mr. Rogers did allude to some action items, like how we can report, be more realistic in what we report. Another data point, what is the actual enrollment of these developments? What's the actual enrollment for the last five years of a new single-family detached housing community, of a multifamily housing community? What are the actual enrollment numbers? I think that would be really helpful in our feasibility studies to make sure that it's in writing and documented so that it can be used towards, you know, planning the next 10 years of, of growth in this county. I'm just speaking to the county council right now because you are the one, you're the decision makers as far as the next general plan. So I'm just waving the white flag from the school system as we proceed with the next general plan. And would appreciate any comments on that and ways to help and to collaborate on this.
Ms. Cottoneo, thank you for bringing that up. I think as Mr. Rogers noted, I think the, the first step is exactly what's happening right now. Making sure that we are all on the same page and we all understand the true breadth of the impact of new construction. As we do go forward, it's a collaboration between the school system and the county. And as you and Mr. Rogers noted, I think going forward, having that in writing in a feasibility study or other fact, or other studies, to have it out there so everybody can fully understand it is a good way for us to move forward.
And I do want to thank you, Mr. Rogers, everybody, and Mr. Washington and your collaboration on this. It's been, you've been incredibly helpful and supportive of getting this narrative to the forefront of conversation. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Young?
Well, actually, I was going to just talk about the general plan. Ms. Cottoneo and I are on the same page, which doesn't surprise me. And I too am very concerned that people are talking about getting rid of ApFO as part of the general plan and the number that's being And, uh, the number that's being bandied about in terms of the number of new units that are needed in Howard County is thirty-one thousand. I simply don't see how we could possibly have school capacity or even afford to build the school capacity that we would need for that number of new units. And I, I have two questions. Actually, I have one question that is directed to both board member Vicki Quaternary and Dr. Lou. Dr. Lou, because you are on the specialized committee to look at schools in terms of the general plan. And Ms. Quaternary, because you are on the general community group that is participating in the general plan. And my question to both of you is, how realistic do you think the general plan, these two general plan committees are being as they are examining the issue of school capacity, student yield, and school construction in the bigger view of the general plan?
Well, I, I can go first, if Dr. Lou doesn't mind. This misnomer is continuing, this sixty, forty, the impact of new construction. That's what is really concerning me is because that has been, it's become fact. It's been repeated so often, it's become fact. And, and just, that's the way it is. It's sixty, forty, which, I mean, it doesn't make any sense because even some of our highest producing established communities produce maybe ten new students over four years. So that's my concern is that this sixty, forty is continuing and the impact of new construction, the cumulative impact of new construction is not being sufficiently communicated to all of these committees, subcommittees, focus groups, what have you, um, that have been formed. And I, that's why I raised this, is that how can we make sure that the reality of the cumulative impact of new construction? Because what we're talking, the way that the direction of this, these, this general plan is going, you know, we've run out of, we've run out of land. So now it's, let's, how can we increase the density? Which is, I'm not against, I just, the school capacity is my, is my priority. And clearly, we have not kept up, um, with, with the capacity for new construction. And it, in part, maybe due to the fact that there's been this misnomer about the impact of it. So that's really my concern is that, no, I don't think that this, the correct narrative is being shared. I think that it, the misnomer continues, and that's where I'm asking for help. Because I'm up against the odds here on this committee. So I'll let Dr. Lou expound because she probably has another perspective.
Well, I will provide my perspective. I'm very new to this process, so it's a learning process for me. So having, uh, reading documents and also listening to the present from, uh, other members and also see the presentation. So what I, my perspective is, I think, uh, when we use historical data to predict the future, one assumption is the historical control is comparable with the future. But if we have extreme example, when one polygon doesn't have any, uh, new construction, or then, when there is a big construction, the historical data is not comparable with the future. It will have a big impact on the student enrollment projection, especially the impact of focus on one particular polygon and one school. Basically, it have a, have a big impact on the school utilization. So I'm really interested in learning how we can use the number of future new constructions to predict student enrollment. Because that is when we see that one new community will basically overcrowden school. We don't want parents move into a community and then later found out that within one or two years, there's still need to be redistricted. I see we need to plan ahead. If we inform the parents that, well, there is a potential school overcrowding because of the new construction, and then we'll move you to another school, which is further away, at least they inform. They can make their decisions based on new information instead of being reacting to the reality that, oh, now we see that in two years, the school is overcrowded. So I think we need to plan ahead and use the future construction to inform our prediction. Because when I see from a data point of view, now we cannot make assumption about the historical data predict the future when there are new construction. There is systematic differences. So the sample size doesn't help us eliminate that difference because when we increase sample size, we reduce random error. But the system, um, but bias doesn't go away. So I think we need to look at data from different perspective and figure out how we can address this issue.
Okay, Ms. Young, do you have other question? Otherwise, we have a lot of people waiting there. You're muted.
No, no, I'm sorry. I was shaking my head, no. Please let other people go.
Since you answered Ms. Young's question, do you have anything else you want to add? Your next question.
No, actually, I was going to provide a comment, and then Ms. Young asked the same question.
Okay, okay, Mr. Rigby.
Thank you. Um, so, Mr. Rogers, I just wanted to, to double check that, that I had captured this correctly. Were you saying that different schools, sorry, that for different units in different school, that send to different schools, that there are different yields?
For purposes of projecting enrollment, yes, we calculate the student yield rates from each type of unit, um, in each of the different factors that we've been talking about, uh, at the school level. So yes, every elementary school in the county has its own calculation based on its own, um, history.
So are you tracking the data that, so based on its own history? So then, are you tracking the data to say that a two-bedroom apartment functions differently when it sends to this school than it does when it's sending to a different school? Um, I know that, you know, for single-family detached, it's relatively similar, but I think what I'm trying to understand, or is it not? Is that an assumption? Does, do single-family detached have different yields in different school zones as well?
They do.
Okay, so, um, oh, yeah, this is, this is really interesting stuff. So then, I, I'm really glad to hear that because that sounds like it's the sort of look back that Ms. Quaternary and I, I think, I mean, Ms. Quaternary has been talking about it for a while, but like sort of really checking our math and making sure that we, um, we know what's coming out. And so then, um, I guess, Ms. Quaternary, my question for you would be, how can we support you in getting better information? Like, how can we support you in getting or making these predictions more accurate with school planning?
Well, it's not even the predictions, it's, it's this narrative that, you know, new construction doesn't have the impact that it actually does. And that's, uh, you know.
Well, I'm still focused on the data part. Because if the sixty, forty is coming from school planning, then how do we get the numbers that show what the situation is?
Well, maybe, and Tim, Mr. Rogers can probably correct me. I just feel like it's comparing apples to oranges when you're talking about how the school system uses that data point and then how it's used outside of the school system. So we use it as a point in time, one year. This is the impact from how many building and use occupancy permits were issued. That is the number that we use, um, for that year prediction, how many from new construction. The problem is that number is used by the outside as that's the, that's the impact of new construction. When it's apples and oranges, it's not really the same thing.
Well, I, because I really want to get to like what, what is the number? Because when I was reading Dr. Wu's post, I was concerned that maybe was HCPSS not counting sort of students as returning for the next year? But that doesn't seem to be the issue.
Right, and that, I think that we have to come up with some sort of, um, what is new construction? Okay, is it a, a single-family detached neighborhood that started within the last five years? Those, any students coming from that development? I'm just using a number.
Right.
For the last five years, any student that moves into that neighborhood, they're considered new construction.
And then also like.
That sort of thing, instead of just one year. Because otherwise, they become, they fall into the whole resales or apartment turnover, not apartment turnover, in this case, but they become part of the resale number, you know, when they, and Mr. Rogers can correct me if I'm wrong. But it's, it's just how we're counting it, and I don't, I think that, what, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say the other part, um, because I know that, I feel like Dr. Wu has, he's running this meeting very efficiently, and I want to stay.
I know, it's a lot of pressure, Ms. Rigby, it really is.
So, I mean, but there are other, and specifically, this is no surprise that I'm bringing this. When you look at the, the chart, right? Appleton Elementary, I think there's maybe been an infill of five homes, single-family detached over the years. Same with Cradle Rock. I mean, we have some older communities that have.
Oh, yeah, and the ones that are impacted by apartments are.
Let me say this way, we don't want to, like, there's too more discussions. And, uh, so if you have first, yeah, if you have specific questions, you can have, send a written question to our staff, right? They can try to answer you, how about that?
Yeah, well, so would, would the school system be interested in having different calculations? So if there, you know, so that way you can really see if there's a neighborhood or a school that's receiving a lot of new construction, that you would calculate that yield differently than you would if you were looking at sort of Cradle Rock, which hasn't had any new development in over thirty years. But this turnover is what's driving. So like, do we need, because the situation, one size does not fit all. And that's clearly, that's clear. I think everybody on this.
Ms. Rogers, can you respond to that question?
So, yeah, so Mr. Rogers or, or anyone, would you be interested in having?
Yeah, I think Mr. Rogers can elaborate on, um, the apartment turnover impact. We certainly have schools that have a lot of apartments that feed into it, depending on where the, they are in the community, where, that we really, that's probably the weakest part of the predictions is apartment turnover. I'll turn it over to him.
Well, there are no apartments in Appleton Elementary that go to.
So, Ms. Rogers, can you respond to that?
It's really for like three, whatever the context circumstances are around the community. It's not just the differences in apartment, it's really the context within which a, a school sits.
So with regard to apartment turnover, that, that is a difficult, um, portion of the projection because apartments do turnover, um, much faster than single-family homes of any, of any type. So in areas where we have a more transient population, apartments could turnover multiple times during a school year. And that, that does yield some complexity of, in, in our calculation, and it, uh, it, it at times can lead to a little bit less accuracy for certain schools in certain years. However, and then in terms of the other question regarding, um, what, you know, different data to be reported out to, to facilitate this discussion, I, I, um, you know, again, I, I think we will need to have further discussions on, um, what does the county council and the county government need in term, from us in terms of, um, defining new construction impacts and resale impacts in order to, um, calculate the, the needed fees from these types of, of developments and student yield situations? And I, you know, I don't know that we'll come up with that answer during this discussion, but I think it's an ongoing topic that we'll need to continue to look at.
Okay, so I'm trying to move on. Dr. Lou, you have a quick question?
No, actually, I have a, a quick response to Ms. Rigby's, uh, question about the impact of the new, uh, construction and, uh, resale. So what I have in mind is, is about the long-term impact versus the short-term impact of resale. Because when we look at resale, prior to resale, it's very likely that the parent, uh, the family, then they already have a certain exit school. So you will see a short time dip of the school, uh, student enrollment. And then when, uh, they resell their home, and then the most likely new families have, uh, students coming in. So you will see a, a increase. And the first, uh, student enrollment projection, we look at the short-term impact because we want to predict it, uh, accurately about the short-term and what impact on the school system. So that's, you see that, um, Mr. Rogers and, uh, Ms. Luby, they have very good prediction about the short-term impact. However, when we look at the construction, the impact overall on Howard County, we need to look at long-term impact. And we know that for new constructions, they add more students. And for resale, if you look at long-term, probably the impact is not as much because it's, they like staple. So it's very similar to in public health that we will look at the impact of, uh, exercise on malnutrition. They have a short-term negative impact, increased risk of malnutrition, uh, short-term. However, the long-term trend is, is improving. It's help you against malnutrition. So I want to look at the new construction, very similar to public health. So shorter versus the longer. Thank you, I, I like that.
That's a great comment, I really like it. So I think that probably reveals the reality of what we're having now.
Dr. Lou, I just want to, we don't, the school system is the only entity that knows which children come from which homes and which developments. So if there's an issue with how that information is coming through to us so that we can, you know, assist in these decision makings, then, then that's something that, you know, I think we're all supportive of changing because we all want accurate data to make accurate decisions about.
Thank you, Ms. Rigby.
Oh, please, please, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the last question goes to Ms. Youngman. So we try to wrap up at ten fifty. Ms. Youngman, please.
You know, I think this, this comes back to that life cycle of the house that Ms. Rigby was getting into, which is, you know, it's a little easier to predict on the new construction because we know we're going to get X ratio. Well, I still think we're not great on apartments. But, you know, we, we, we kind of know that, that, you know, when people are moving into new neighborhoods, who they're going to be, um, how many kids they have. But the problem is, we could be getting crushed over here by new kids from a new neighborhood, and then we could have these three older neighborhoods in that same polygon that have just kind of hit that part of the life cycle where they're unloading kids. Or they could be at the point in the life cycle where those houses are now turning over. And, yeah, school planning did a great job predicting the kids coming from the new neighborhood, but they missed that these other three neighborhoods are now all turning over from people like me to people with young kids. It seems like that resale piece is the one that we continue to struggle with. And I, I don't even necessarily, I know Dr. Wu wants to move on, but, you know, somebody out there is doing this right. Some, some other county, some other jurisdiction has figured this out. And there has to be some way, whether it's the age of the home or the demographic of the neighborhood as far as the age of the occupants, to kind of predict when these individual subdivisions that are older are all going to turn over. That seems to be second only to the apartments, the piece that, that, that we're getting caught by surprise on. So I'll just end it there. I appreciate you coming back to me, Dr. Wu, I know you want to move on.
Do I have just one more question? Okay, Ms. Quaternary, be quick.
Just real quick, I think this, this deserves a bigger conversation, maybe a meeting dedicated to it. I, I know I have a lot more to say, and I, I feel like we're, we, we need to make this, uh, its own topic. So I will leave it at that, and maybe it's something that chair, we can, the chairs can discuss and.
Let me think about it, let's see whether we can arrange a separate meeting, just put every question together and then see, okay. Just go through the questions, make sure we understand the issue much better, more detailed and your depth, and that may be one of the new, new meeting, how about that? Let's move to another one, the feasibility study, and, uh,